The committee is myself, Councilor Tavoris. It is six P M. All right, we have one piece of business tonight. Let's go. And actually, I'll just mention that the the first item that's that's on our list here is is being held because we're waiting for the the public hearing. So we'll move on to the second item, which is from the docket of April first, twenty twenty five. I entertain a motion to accept the following retirement board vote. The Attleboro Retirement Board unanimously voted at their February twenty fourth, twenty twenty five meeting to increase board members stipends from three thousand dollars to four thousand five hundred dollars annually. As stated in the Mass General Law, Chapter thirty two, Section twenty, paragraph six, the board can only receive the increased stipend with the city council's acceptance of the board's vote. Second, motion is in order. We talked about this briefly a couple of weeks ago, and there were some questions, so I invited the auditor to come and help answer some of those questions. So, Devin, if you would.
Sure.
Welcome.
Hi.
Some of the questions were, how many people are on the the retirement board?
Sure.
If you could.
So the retirement board is made up of five people. One is the appointment of the mayor, confirmed by the municipal council. Presently, that member is Barry LaCass. He, I believe, his term ends in February of twenty twenty six.
Okay.
I'm the ex officio member. There's ex officio position, so by virtue of the being the position of city auditor, I am the ex officio on the board. There are two members of the board who are elected by active retired members. So if you're a member of the system, you are eligible to run for office, be on the retirement board, and you're elected to a three-year term. It's a rolling three-year term. And those two members presently are Scott Sharet, who is a police officer, and retired firefighter Bruce Tundra. And then the fifth member is elected to the position by the other four members of the board and cannot be a member of the system.
Okay.
So there are five members, one of whom cannot be a member of the system. That's the fourth member. Excuse, refer to as the fifth member, I apologize. If you, as I think all of you know, in order to be eligible for credible service in the retirement system, you have to make at least five thousand dollars a year. So if you're brand new to the retirement system, the reason that statute capped the amount that retirement board members could be paid at forty five hundred dollars is that you will not be able to earn credible service for years of membership by just serving on the retirement system. Originally, the legislation was proposed at over seven thousand. I talked to my retirement board attorney today. It was originally proposed at over seven thousand. It was pulled down below the five thousand dollar benchmark so that by just virtue of service on the board, you're not earning credible service as a retirement board member towards credible service in the system. As you know, credible service comes with benefits, post-employment benefits potentially. So those folks would not be eligible, and the fifth member can't be a member of our system.
That makes sense.
Does that make sense?
And so all five members, including yourself and Barry LaCass, all would receive the stipend. Is that correct?
Yes. Every board member is eligible for and would receive the forty five hundred dollar stipend up from three thousand. The annual, the stipend is paid for from the investment income, as are all expenses of the board. So there isn't a separate appropriation in the budget to account for the expenses of the board. The expenses of the board, similar to the staff payroll, the legal expenses of the board, the cost of the investor, we have an investment advisor, we pay for investment advice, and obviously, the sleeve of investments that we have, some are managed investments, and those, the entities that manage those investments get a percentage competitively procured under Chapter thirty two. We do all of that kind of stuff. They get paid, and all of that comes from the investments of the fund. Everything is calculated in as part of the annual, the biannual actuarial. So the one one twenty four actuarial would take into consideration increases, and we'll have another actuarial as of one one twenty six, which will inform future requirements to fund the system.
So we're talking about a seventy five hundred dollar annual increase to cover this. And when was the last time this was increased?
So the, in nineteen ninety five, the original statute was approved and accepted by the municipal council on October third, nineteen ninety five. If you had done it, if there had been a two percent cost of living adjustment increase to that three thousand dollars, it would have hit four, four thousand five hundred and forty seven dollars in two thousand and sixteen. And I think some of the councilors may have been serving. The last time the retirement board asked for the increase did previously ask for an increase, that was in December of two thousand and sixteen, and at the time, the vote was three to two. I was a no vote then, personally, because I did serve on the board at that time, and that was largely because of the financial circumstances of the city. Some things, obviously financially, and the makeup of the board as well as the staff, there's a lot of time that we spend outside of the ordinary course of business, working on retirement board stuff. So I thought, personally, I felt as though it was warranted this time around.
Fair. That's all I have for questions. Does anybody else have questions for the auditor, Councilor Holmes?
Thank you. So there has not been an increase since it was started in ninety five.
To my knowledge, no. I have served on the retirement board since two thousand and one, and the stipend has been three thousand, three thousand dollars the entire time I've served. Doing research backwards, I was able to find the vote and the acceptance of the statute and through council records, and I believe that was, three thousand dollars was the annual stipend, and that was adopted in October third, nineteen ninety five. So I'm assuming, to be perfectly honest with you, I don't know if that started immediately or if that started January first. You know, if the council voted for it in October of nineteen ninety five, I don't know if the people who were being paid then were like a month behind or a couple of months, because the current software system that I have access to for payroll records didn't start until nineteen ninety six.
Thank you. Councilor Lavoie.
Thank you, Chair Cobus. Thank you for coming down. I know it's a very busy time of year for you. That's an understatement. Could you just, I know you mentioned it a little bit, could you allude to some of the things the board does, maybe even an estimate on the amount of time they they do give to this?
So oftentimes, the meetings are during a regular business, regular business day. Outside of that, we do. So the retirement system is responsible for an, every other year, the actuarial, actuarial, actuarial report, right? The census data would be provided by staff, but the review of that forty-five page document, I know I do that nights and weekends, right? I'm not doing that during the day here. We do an update. You have to bring the census data that's on your actuarial report to the right measurement date for inclusion in the financial statements, right? That's a function of the retirement system, because GASB sixty, the retirement system has three member units, so it's not just the city of Attleboro. It's the city of Attleboro, the Attleboro Contributory Retirement System, and the Attleboro Housing Authority. Those are the three member units of the Attleboro Contributory Retirement System. So we have to provide information for those three entities for their financial statement. So that's the GASB sixty eight report. So that's a little bit of what I bring to the table with my, my level of, you know, interest and expertise might be more aligned to the, you know, being the person that reviews those reports. We have staff that do a lot of reporting for PARAC, but that stuff has to be checked. I, I don't have time to check all of that stuff during the ordinary course of the day, so I know I check that nights, weekends. The, one of the other things that I think people need to know that as fiduciaries of the retirement system and on the board, we are responsible for filling out some paperwork with our oversight agency, PARAC, and we are also required to do mandatory training. So we have to meet certain credit hours every three, no less than, I think, three credit hours per year, no more than nine, no less than eighteen, and a three-year term. So they do a lot of stuff online. We may do some of the online training. That would satisfy it. Some of my training in particular is satisfied when I go to school up at UMass Amherst, which largely benefits the city in my role as a city auditor, but there's some classes there that I'll take. The board pays for half of those classes for me, so the, my budget doesn't have to pay that out of its entirety. So there's, there's kind of a crossover in my world in particular, because my, some of my stuff is financial. We have RFPs, every investment firm that we have to do under retirement law. So Chapter thirty B largely governs municipal procurement law for the city. Layered on top of that is Chapter thirty two B for retirement services. So there's additional procurement requirements in that regard. So if we're doing an RFP and we have that information back, we'd have to vet that, read that. When you're going through that information, again, there's not sufficient time during the day to do that. So that's the kind of stuff that I do usually offline, these the minutes that I have to read and return to the staff. You know, I will go over that, you know, the staff is located here in the building, so there's opportunity for me to have conversations with them and talk to the retirement board staff. But a lot of that is done outside of the, for me, outside of the ordinary course of business. For my colleagues, some of whom are retired, they, they're doing this, you know, outside of their normal, whatever they, it's, it's, in other words, it's not just the meetings that we do. Like all of you, right? You have to do all of your homework outside of the council meeting. What the public sees here from all of you, you know, once a week, or, you know, subcommittee meetings or the special things that you might do on weekends and stuff, probably doesn't even put a dent in what you actually contribute in time to serve in the capacity that you serve as councilors. So not to the same extent, certainly, right? Because I think it's completely different. But there's a lot of review, research, following up on things, conversations with our legal representation and that kind of stuff. So I don't know if that answers it or if it's too much, but.
No, it does. I mean, I, truthfully, I support it, but I think I, I more so just wanted some people at home to understand, you know, what it is the board does, and that it isn't just, you know, a meeting a month and we're given extra money for. So I think you answered that perfectly.
Thank you. So we're very fortunate. We have a very capable staff, but, and they, they're newer staff, right? So there's lots of it that we're learning together, which requires even more research. We had long-serving staff in the office greater than twenty-five, thirty years. I can tell you when a twenty-five, a thirty-year staff member leaves, it hurts. So, so I hope that answers the question.
Yes, thank you. Perfect. Are there any other questions? Hearing none. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Always a pleasure.
See you tomorrow night.
Thanks, Deb.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hearing none, motion passes. This is zero. All right. And then we have one other item, and Amy could come forward. She reached out earlier today to talk about some work that's happening at the library, and so the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thanks for having me here tonight. I had been talking to the mayor a few weeks ago about the library's flooring project, and she mentioned, like, have you talked to the council about this at all? And not specifically. So here I am. As you know, we are replacing the carpet and tile in the floor at the library. We've had a lot of meetings with the Municipal Building Commission about it, and as of today, the plan is for us to close for the month of December. That date was chosen because it is the lowest foot traffic. You know, we, we know exactly how many people come through the doors every day. December is by far the least visited month in the library. We feel like in the budget projections they did, it will, the project will go faster, closing for one month. So it saves the city something in the range of between twelve and twenty thousand dollars doing it all at one time. And also, the communication to the public will be much, much cleaner. Otherwise, we would be closing a floor at a time, and knowing that these types of projects go over and under time, telling people that there's no computers available for a week, and then they come back when that week is over, and then they're not available for three more days, or telling the children's room is closed for two weeks, but then it's closed for four weeks. It just makes everything cleaner and easier. And then also staff-wise, so while the library is closed, we are, will be finding work and workspace for twenty-three staff members and myself and other parts of the city. One of the issues we always have in December is vacation time. Two-thirds of the staff are parents of young children. So for childcare needs, holiday needs, it is basically a lottery system on who comes to work and who gets to stay home with their families. So lots of people will be using vacation time during that time. We do have a large number of people who just use the building to be in the building during the day. So we're working with our downtown neighbors to figure out some of, some solutions to that, like with the Y, with the COA, with the Family Resource Center, trying to find other options for folks who just want to be inside for that time and after that. So definitely will not be business as usual, but we're looking forward to some new opportunities to do outreach in other parts of the city that we wouldn't normally be able to do. Questions, concerns?
Sure. And I remember with that project, one of the biggest pieces of it was sort of the logistics of moving everything out and moving everything back in. And so I would assume by doing this all, in like closing down the library, that speeds things up. Does that save us money?
It speeds things up, it saves us money, and it's much, much safer.
Okay.
The move manager that came in to do the inventory was very concerned about the moving things in and around during the project and having patrons. We saw that a little bit during the, the envelope project, right? Just putting up a sheet of plastic doesn't mean a four-year-old who loves construction workers isn't going to go see what's happening behind there. I'm just saying.
And where did we end up landing? If I remember correctly, Councilor Lavoie had had a bunch of questions on, is carpet the right answer, or should we do something else? Should we carpet around the stacks or, you know, move the stacks? Like, what was the end result that?
So it's a mix of carpet tile and, and vinyl tile. We are not carpeting around the stacks. We are, there's shelves that can come up, and they will carpet under.
Outstanding.
It's just the right way to do things.
I have Councilor Angela, then Councilor Lavoie.
Thank you, Councilor Cobus. I know you touched on it a little bit, but just for folks at home on, for all the, for while it's going to be shut down, like, what will be the game plan to do, and what will the, these employees be doing? I know you touched on it a little bit.
Yeah, so it's a really wide variety of things, and it also depends on who takes vacation time and who is available. So I've met with Dave Sawyer at the school department, and he just said, like, our house is your house. Like, we can put anybody anywhere. The COA, the rec department, who said, you know, we've got a desk. Somebody can come here. The treasurer and accounting have offered our office manager time in this building to have access to Munis. They'll be working in the school libraries, helping out with projects in the schools. They'll be doing outreach, doing book clubs, or, or just setting up a laptop, doing their normal work in other locations. And then we're, we're brainstorming lists of more like research-focused projects for the folks who typically work at the front desk and whose day-to-day work is really dependent on foot traffic.
Thank you. Councilor Lavoie.
Thank you, Chair Cobus. Thank you for coming down. That answers my first question. I'm happy to hear that. We're going to find places. I'm happy to hear that we're going to find places for everybody. I was worried about, you know, the volunteers who do so for property tax relief, things of that nature. So definitely happy to hear that. My next question was, did we get any test results back for the potential hazardous materials? Or is that going to be later this year?
No hazardous materials to date.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? I'd love to understand sort of the financial impact, like the actual savings amount. If, I assume we don't know that offhand?
Off the top of my head, I don't know.
That's fine.
But I know that we talked about it at length. Mark Zawatski is working with us and the last municipal building commission.
Sorry to put you on the spot with that.
No, no, no. It's a little intimidating after Deb, too, right? Like, I'm, yeah, I don't have the exact figures.
Okay. No, no, no problem. Love to understand that at some point, but, uh, no, it's, it's great to hear that, that we are getting some savings there. It's unfortunate that we're shutting down for a month, but it's, I, I agree with you that the communication is, is incredibly clean to just say for the month of December, the library will be closed for renovation, and it sounds great, and it sounds great that the city is getting some savings out of it.
There was a question at one point of thinking, like, would we, like, essentially lose customers? And I will say, I don't know if you guys have seen every, at the end of every calendar year, we put out an infographic that talks about, like, how many cardholders we have, how many questions we were asked, how many programs we've had. Right now, we have over 17,000 cardholders. That represents 37% of the city's population. That's the highest number we've ever had in my time as an administrator. And so we don't worry about losing customers. I mean, we're part of a network, and we certainly are going to encourage folks to go to Seacong and North Attleboro and Plainville and all the surrounding towns, but...
Well, maybe not North Attleboro.
But we know they'll be back. We know they'll be back.
Outstanding. Any other questions or comments? Council Waterman?
So I know a number of seniors park down there under the new plan. Will that affect them in any way?
It shouldn't. I mean, the parking lot will still be there, and, I mean, it'll be a great time to park there when we're closed.
Okay.
Yeah. And we do have, I believe it's about, it's just under 200 seniors who have passes, just since we started that program.
Thank you. Perfect. Anything else? Council Tavares?
Okay. Just, it was just a closing comment on my end. Yeah, I, I, I love the plan. I think even, even dealing with the unideal parts of this, obviously, you know, the library being closed for a month, there's nothing you can do about that, but that's the reality. But even the prospect of, as you were describing earlier, the interdepartmental interaction potentially in, in December, sounds really interesting, and I think it could be a great opportunity to take sort of something that's, you know, a not-ideal situation and actually turning it into something that could benefit, you know, the city in terms of, even if it's just the employee base, so...
Yeah, no, people are really excited. I think it could lead to bigger and better things after the project's done.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, and just the, the safety of the, the project, I mean, that sounds like it was a pretty big-ticket item in terms of just thinking through the logistics of how that would work and, and just being able to do that project right as well. So I really love everything about the, the planning of this, so thank you.
Great. Good comment. President Delicio?
Amy, always good to see you. I just want to thank you for your communication. I think that this communication, so, because we're going to get calls on it, too. I love the outside-the-box thinking, you know? I mean, I think we all remember the envelope project, and, you know, you guys did a great job with that, but this is just another example of the great communication from you that we expect, whether it's your monthly report from, yes, it is our favorite library report, but, you know, thank you for all you do. And I think starting the communication in April is going to take a lot of the pain away in December, so thank you.
And you'll be hearing a lot about it through the fall. We're going to make sure, I mean, there's always going to be somebody who just shows up and is like, why the heck isn't the library here? Like, I, I get that, but we're doing the best that we can to let them know.
Well, thank you.
Perfect.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Amy.
Thank you.
All right. Well, that concludes the business for the finance committee. I move to adjourn at 6:24.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, and I'd like to cancel the IT and Infrastructure Committee.
We would like to call to order the License Committee at 6:24. Council Waterman and Holmes. From the docket of April 15, 2025, entertain a motion to approve the scrap metal recycler, junk dealer license renewal for Proloris New England Company LLC, located at 136 Bacon Street in Attleboro.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. This is a standard renewal. It's actually formally under Schneider Steel. Same property, same layout, nothing's changed there, so I don't see any reason to hold it up, but I will take any questions or comments anyone asks. Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. From the docket of April 15, 2025, entertain a motion to approve the license renewal application from Alex Artega of Palagi's Ice Cream at 55 Bacon Street, Pawtucket, Rhode Island.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. I don't know that there's anyone, maybe even in the city, definitely, hopefully not on this body, that doesn't know who Palagi's is, so I hope there is no concerns, but I'd love to hear them yourself. Perfect. Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. With that, I would call for an adjournment at 6:25.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Aye.
I'll cancel the city property and claims committee.
Thanks. I'd like to call, call the works to order at 6:25. I have one motion this evening. From the docket of April 15, 2025, I entertain a motion to transfer $63,000 from account 11241000578300, Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer, to the following: $50,000 to 1420100052101, DPW Heating, $13,000 to 14201000521020, DPW Lights and Power.
Second.
Thank you. This is just for the bills for lights and power and heating for the end of the fiscal year, till the end of the fiscal year, excuse me. Does anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And that's all the business for tonight. I'd like to call for an adjournment at 6:26.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Adjourned. Thank you.
I'd like to call the Public Safety Emergency Management Committee at 6:27. Myself, Councilor Lavoy, and Councilor Angelo. I have four motions this evening. From the docket of April 15, 2025, entertain a motion requesting C-10-4, motor vehicle ordinance be amended as follows. 10-411, isolated stop sign, delete northbound drivers on Sunset Lane at Daisy, add eastbound drivers on Daisy Lane at Reynolds Avenue.
Second.
Thank you. I spoke to the chief, to the police chief about this. It makes sense. I don't know if anybody had an opportunity to drive down there and see that.
Oh, yeah. Makes sense. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions about it? So it's just kind of, I think that this was a time when people were just calling and asking for things, and it was just getting popped up around the city, but it really does make sense. It's kind of this awkward three-way, and it needs, it does need to be somewhere else, so at Daisy and Reynolds, so... All right. No further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I, from the docket of April 15, 2025, I entertain a motion to transfer $4,900 from account Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer to account Fire Longevity.
Second.
Thank you. So, actually, this kind of, the Attleboro Retirement Board updated the credible service dates for two firefighters, which meant that there was additional funds that were needed. It was in the backup information. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. From the docket of April 15, 2025, I entertain a motion to transfer $14,490 from account Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer to account Police Body Camera Storage.
Second.
Thank you.
Sorry. Not on the...
That's okay. So we had a three-year contract when we first bought the cameras, which was wonderful, but now the contract has ended and it goes year to year. So this would include July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2026, of backup storage. So when we first purchased them in 2022, we had the three years, and now it's time that we have to purchase it every year. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I know if you're following along, it's a little bit mixed up. I just wanted to let you know, there's a couple motions on here that are not in my committee, but... From the docket of April 15, 2025, I entertain a motion to transfer $338.78 from account Light Differential to account Dues.
Second.
Thank you. This was, like I said, I apologize that that motion's not available, but the backup information states that there was an outstanding invoice for unanticipated cost increases for dues. So the chief of police is just asking for the transfer of the $300. All those in, ready questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. That's all the business this evening, and I will call for an adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We were adjourned at 6:30. Thank you.
I call Personnel, Veterans, and Human Services Committee to order at 6:30. Councilors President, Councilor Tavares, and Councilor Waterman.
This is my mic. I don't know what is going on.
From the docket of April 15, 2025, I entertain a motion to approve the extended appointment of Matt Crowde, his acting superintendent of water, for an additional temporary appointment of 90 days in accordance with Section 3.3b of the Attleboro Home Rule Charter.
Second.
Thank you. Obviously, Matt's been doing a great job, and, and he's really stepped up, and I think the, the results are pretty evident that he's really getting things taken care of, and we're back to being full over at Manchester, and, and, you know, big thank you to Matt. Any questions, comments, concerns? Just, I want to go on record as being fully supportive of Matt. I agree with you. He's done a great job. All right. All right. Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. All right. For the docket of April 15, 2025, entertain a motion to approve the following appointment of Susan Williams to fill an unexpired term on the Council on Human Rights, term to expire February 2027.
Second.
Thank you. Susan is on the Council on Agent. We brought her in, I think it was last year. She does a great job. She owns a small business in Attleboro, very, very enthusiastic person. She will do a great job on the Council on Human Rights. I've known Susan for at least, you know, a good 15 years, and I've been very impressed with everything that she has done. And, and to start a new business up, I think it was her five-year anniversary, two Saturdays ago, for a business doing fantastic, it's, and it's for people being able to, like, if they're in a retirement home, or they want to be able to go home, and she helps them being able to, to go home and live and be at home versus having to be in a retirement center or what have you. And so she does a lot of good for a lot of people, and I think this is another great fit for her. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. All right. For the docket of April 15, 2025, entertain a motion to approve the following reappointments. Kevin Smith, Cable Advisory Board, one year, February 2026. Christopher Leone, Conservation Commission, three years, February 2028. Brian Hatch, Historical Commission, alternate, three years, February 2028. Peter Fellini, Planning Board, five years, February 2030. Dermot Locken, Recreation Commission, three years, February 2028. Braden LaPrade, Youth Commission, three years, February 2028.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Tavares. Basically, these were, the reappointments were done in time, will be getting sworn in, so we just have to kind of go through it again to get it taken care of. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. All right. From the docket of April 15, 2025, entertain a motion to accept a generous donation to the Veterans Office of $1,500 in Stop and Shop gift certificates, gift certificates from the Attleboro Ox Lodge 1014.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Tavares. Again, can't say enough good things about the Attleboro Ox Lodge. I've got a great, a lot of great people down there. They do a lot of great things, and we're lucky to have them in Attleboro. Any questions, comments, concerns? All right. Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. Oh, all right. From the docket of April 1, 2025, entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the City of Attleboro and the Attleboro Public Safety Dispatches Association.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Tavares. Basically, this is, this is a contract. We're just getting this taken care of. It's been agreed upon, and we're just getting it approved, and the, and it's good to see that we get the dispatches taken care of, too, as well, as it's very well-deserved. Any questions, comments, concerns? Yes.
Any notable changes in, in the contract? Anything to highlight in particular?
Not, I mean, I could certainly gather a little bit more information, but from what I understand, it was just the, basically, the COLA, basically, you know? But I will, I will, for the next meeting, just to, just to double-check, just to be safe. All right. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. That's all for Personnel, Veterans, and Human Services Committee. I call for an adjournment at 6:35.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Tavares. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We are adjourned at 6:35. And I would just like to cancel compensation classification and call for a meeting at the next appropriate time.
Excuse me. I call to order a zoning land use and sustainability committee at 6:35, and Councilors Dolan and Lavoy are on and present tonight. I have one motion from the docket of April 1, 2025. Entertain a motion to approve the conservation restriction from Stephen S. Cushman and Maria R. Cushman to the Rehoboth, Rehoboth Man Trust, sorry, in the public interest pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 184, or 32, regarding the Rehoboth-Attleboro boundary line with 1.284 acres located in Attleboro, more specifically, as shown on the plan. Land surveyed for Stephen S. and Maria R. Cushman and Rehoboth Mass, April 5, 2024, revised October 24, 2024, and November 8, 2024, by Dyer Surveying, Division of Oak Hill Engineering.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Uh, so this is mostly in Rehoboth, and if you look at your backup information that was given, the very last page has a map on it, and on the map is this little tiny area of Attleboro, right here. So it's just showing that all this land of Rehoboth and that little bit of Attleboro is going to the, um, Rehoboth Land Trust for conservation purposes only. And you can read through the backup information of all the things that they say are allowed on this land and what is not allowed on this land. So that's what we're voting on for tonight. Any other questions? Okay. So, um, call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
That's 3 to 0, thank you. And that is all the, um, motions that we have for tonight, and I call for adjournment.
Second.
That's 6:37. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We are adjourned.
The Transportation and Traffic Committee has no business. We'll meet at the next appropriate time.
I call ordinances, elections, and legislative matters to order at 6:37. Counselors on my committee include myself, Counselor Holmes and Counselor Kopus. From the docket of April 16, 2024, I entertain a motion to strike the following: a motion to approve the attached resolution to amend the city charter to provide for the appointment of the positions of city treasurer and city collector as opposed to elected into petition the Massachusetts Legislature to enact the same.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. All right, so, um, I'm going to recap some of the discussions that we've had on this, on this matter, now coming up on pretty much close to a year. So, um, a couple of things that I, that I want to note with this piece of business. We've, we've been looking at two, I think, two different tracks of, of issues as it relates to this matter. So one is, is the merit of the process of, of changing these two positions under this business from elected to appointed, but then also the policy, the merit of the policy, and whether we think as a legislative body, this is a good idea or not. And I think these are two, two separate discussions, and our early discussions really centered more around, uh, the policy of this, and I think there was some discussion around that, and there's, there's definitely various views that have been expressed here over the last several months in, in this committee. But the, the second part that I want to focus the, the most on, I think is more, more important really, based on where we're at, and I'll tell you why in a second, is the, is the process, is if, from a policy standpoint, we think this is a good idea, what's the best process to, to pursue? Or even if that discussion comes later, pursuing the right process so that we can facilitate the discussion of the actual policy. And so, I think in furtherance of this, as, as many will recall, several weeks ago, we had George Spacher here, um, as the, the Chair of the Election Commission, and also Sharon Fortune as the, um, the manager of the Elections Office, to speak to the, the process of, hey, what needs to happen if we submit this special act to the legislature? And what does the timing look like to, to get this, you know, question on a ballot, and all of those logistics? Because it, it takes a little bit of work. And so I've had many conversations, um, with, with them, as well as Peter Mello, um, to talk about what that looks like. And so at this point, we're, we're definitely way down the path of, of being able to get this done timely for this election season, and, um, and as, I'm sure many of you recognize that at this point, there, there's, there's a reason why I have not brought this up in the last several weeks. I had a conversation with the mayor several weeks ago about which route we, we pursue really as a city, and, um, she was open to the idea of an ad hoc charter commission or something along those lines. And as I've alluded to in a couple of the last conversations about this in committee, I think the charter commission is the way to go. Now, whether we do that under the, um, under the process that's prescribed under state law, which is very involved, um, and from, you know, the petition process to, um, to voting in the, the members for that charter commission, and then the actual study review, and, and that whole period, I mean, that, that could take two years, start to finish, pretty easily. However, I think going down the, the road of looking at a charter commission is, is the prudent option at this point, not for, not just for this piece of business. Again, I think I've made clear, I'm, I'm, from a policy standpoint, I'm not a proponent of changing these positions from, from, um, from elected to appointed, but, but regardless, I think the process to go down that path, and if, if some of you will recall from the public hearing last year, I think there were, there were several people who, um, who spoke, and, and that was the view that I think was represented by, by many, which, which I agree with as well. I don't think, um, a special act to the, to the legislature and going down that route is the appropriate way to do this. That's my opinion. That may differ among the, the council, but I, I think at this point, we, we owe it to the residents of the, of the city, um, to take a look at this issue, not in a vacuum, but, but look at it holistically in terms of our charter, because there's various issues even well before my time that, that have been discussed here on this council about, about changing in the city charter. And so I think now is probably the time to start going down that path, and, and I think, in order to, well, not necessarily in order to do that, but in furtherance of that, I think it makes sense to, to strike this piece of business, and if that's something that we want to pursue, think about it in the context of the charter commission, which I think is a whole, separate conversation. So, with that being said, I'll open up the floor if anyone has any questions, comments, thoughts. Counselor Kopus?
So, so first of all, I was and continue to be in, supportive of having these positions be appointed positions, but I agree with you that the process by which we were going about it wasn't quite right, and it, it, and it didn't, it didn't feel right, and, and so, um, and so like, as a resident and as a voter, I, I would have voted to, to, to change these to be appointed positions, but, um, I, I agree that it should be a ballot question or something like that. So I'm, I'm okay with, with striking this now, but I, I do think we should move down the path of a full charter commission. I've heard it since I've been on the council. I, people, it keeps coming up time and time again, so I, I think it's, it's time that, that we just open up that can of worms and, and get that process started, even though, you know, we know it's going to take a couple of years, like, let's, let's just get that process started and, and, and move forward with that. I, I think it's, it's due time. It keeps coming up over and over again, and, and these little charter changes keep coming up, and, and we can't make these changes. Let's, let's just open up the can of worms and, and get the process started, and the sooner we start, the sooner we can be done with it. So, um, I'm supportive of striking this, provided we're going to move forward with getting the, the process of starting a charter commission moving, if, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah, so we appreciate that. Counselor Sawyer?
Uh, I wondered if, um, this charter commission would then still allow for, to be on the ballot, to change these positions to appointed, or this, I mean, maybe that's what the charter commission does, is they decide if it's going to be on the ballot or not, but I just didn't know if that was something that's going to happen in, in addition, or with that.
Yeah, I think it would be a completely different process. So the, the charter commission would then make the decision, well, I shouldn't say make the, they would make a recommendation on the things that they think should be changed, revised in the, in the charter, and so this could be included as one of those issues. So that, that's how that would be addressed.
It just, sorry, additional question. It just seemed that that was what a lot of people wanted, was to have the ability to make that decision, the residents to make that decision about whether or not they'd be changed to appointed.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's sort of another representative vehicle, I guess, of local government. That's one way to look at it, right? I mean, as opposed to, you know, someone like the council, you know, making that decision. It's, it's sort of another representative body, right, that's voted by the, the city at large through the charter commission, and then that report, I, I'm not, I'm not 100% on the process, I'll have to go and look at that, and, you know, that'll be a whole, you know, another set of business that we pursue, but, uh, but I believe at some point, there, there's a certain amount of time for that charter commission to, um, to put together its recommendations and then bring those before the council, and then I think at that point, um, there, there's a process for that as well, but if anyone feels free to correct me if there's, uh, additional details that anyone wants to bring up regarding that. Counselor Holmes?
Thank you. So even if we were to pursue the special act, it's not quick, and it doesn't necessarily guarantee anything. We've had to do, we've done it, changing councilman to counselor, and that took years. We're recently seeing business come down that didn't, um, go through regarding rent that the administration just brought in again, because it went to the state and it, it sat. So I don't think that the special act necessarily would have been an automatic, it's going to be on the ballot. So, and then the charter commission comes up, like Counselor Kopus said, every year, two or three issues come up that indicate this is what kind of needs to happen, so they can look at many different things related, um, and I have a list of what's come up over the years, so I think it would be like a better process in general. It is a lengthy process, but they're going to assess everything. They're not going to just assess one part of the city.
No, agreed. One, one follow-up comment, just to be, to be fair to, to, to the process, I, I think Holyoke pursued something similar last year, different set of circumstances, but they did petition the legislature to do exactly what we were looking to do here, and change these positions from elected to appointed. It's possible for this to be done in less than three, uh, six months. In their case, it happened in three months, um, and Representative Hawkins confirmed that with the state rep there as well. It was, I mean, maybe you could say it was an anomaly, or, you know, maybe it's the, you know, sort of the, the type of business that they tend to rubber stamp, uh, but in all fairness, I think there was a possibility to, to get that done, I think, had we done that in February, early March for, um, for this November. It was possible, um, not a guarantee, of course, but again, we're talking about the, the merit of the process, um, and not just the, the practicality of it happening, but I just wanted to be fair on that point, so.
Thank you. Good clarity.
Counselor LaVoy?
Thank you, Chair Tavoris. Happy to see this potentially get struck, and it's kind of what I pushed for from the start, I think that this is, this should always be a decision by the voters, um, even though I'm personally a firm believer in the separation of having two city boys be able to not worry about making decisions that go against what their boss may think. So I'm a firm supporter in this, and I'm a firm supporter in the charter commission as well, and I, something of this nature, I think of Arlington, who did a home, home rule petition and waited three years, and they're now in the process of resending it because the state did nothing with it. So it is a coin flip, I would say, with what the state does, and we've seen that with a lot of different things, so, um, you know, I think that an Attleboro piece of business is something we should handle in Attleboro, so, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Waterman, then President Delisi.
Okay. Well, I totally support going the charter route, charter commission, and I don't believe we've had a charter commission. I could be wrong, but I think it's been about 30 years.
Okay. So, that number's... I think it's been several decades, yeah. I've, I've heard the same thing. I, I had a number that, that someone credible had mentioned, I mean, I don't remember what that number is, but it's, it's definitely 30 or plus.
John, John Davis chaired it, as I recall, and so, um, so I think it's time. It's the way, way we should be going.
All right, thank Counselor Tavoris. I, um, uh, me being a business owner and also tasked with building businesses and stuff, me personally, I would never, um, allow these positions in my company or in one of my companies with to be elected. But I am an elected official, and I do think the genuine consensus of the citizens are they want to see this, uh, at least go to the ballot, so, so I, I certainly would, um, support a charter commission on this and, uh, and see how that goes, and then let it get out to vote.
President Delisi?
Thanks. I love the conversation, and Jonathan, I want to thank you for the work that you put on this. I think it was a big piece of business that really, um, almost a year late, a year on Wednesday, um, deserved to be vetted the way it is. So I think to Counselor Waterman's point, I think you're looking probably like, between '95 and '99 was the last charter commission. I've been a vocal proponent for a charter commission for a long time, as well as review of the ordinances. We have a lot of obsolete portions of the charter, a lot of obsolete, um, ordinances as well. The other thing is, I am not a fan of special acts, especially for something of this magnitude. To me, it seems like a backdoor way of getting in. It takes away our voice, takes away the voter's voice and the public's voice. I think, uh, this is the right conversation to have at the right time, gives us the opportunity to truly plan, and you know what I like to say, if we fail to plan, we plan to fail. So I do appreciate you, um, putting the work into this that you have, as well as your suggestion to strike, so thank you.
Need additional questions, comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?